We are the ambassadors for Christ. We preach in Jesus everywhere. We taking gospel to the nations, yeah. We are the ambassadors.
Can I see you indicates where you are now? Can you wave please? Facilitate us, please wave vigorously. Alright, thank you. We have to start now. Please pray and begin the study. Your time starts counting from now. Please, the study for this morning is study 3, Bible study 3. And for sake of clarity, if you had not been in the pre-conference training and in the recaps, don't handle any class, please and please. I got information that some people just jump in and create classes for themselves, those who were not even trained to handle the study. Please don't do that. God bless you.
That sudden by the brother's friend tried to mediate but failed. One day, an air helicopter named Thomas arrived in the village. He had heard about the brother's division and decided to help Thomas. Approached David first, asking if he could build anything for him. David stayed angry, replied, “Build a tall fence between my land and Caleb's. I never want to see his face again.” Thomas nodded quietly and set to work. After several days, Thomas called David to see the finished work. But instead of a fence, there stood a beautiful wooden bridge, spanning the divide between the brothers' lands. Before David could react, he saw Caleb walking towards the bridge. With tears in his eyes, Caleb said, “I was wrong, my brother. I am sorry for the pain I caused you.” David asked softly, “And in reply, I too am sorry, Caleb. Let us start anew.”
Praise the Lord. Praise the Lord. How many of us are with our Father? Hello? We are with our Father. Very good. Now, the first one here is, how does choosing to build a bridge instead of a fence reflect the power of forgiveness and reconciliation in restoring broken relationship? Quickly. Can anybody help us? Do they have program? Can anybody help us? Quickly, quickly, we are running out of time. Sir? Can you help us? Now, we are looking at fence and bridge. Yes?
What the other guy was demanding for is to build a fence so that they cannot see themselves again. But this bridge is a kind of linkage, that link between two of them, whereby one will cross to meet the other. Had it been they built that fence, they may never see themselves, they will be divided forever. So that's what I want.
Can I get any other comment?
Praise the Lord. Firstly, a bridge is a connector, it connects things together.
A bridge is a connector.
While a fence separates things, your own boundary.
A fence separates things.
Yeah, so if you are building a bridge, you are trying, that is, it creates forgiveness. You want people to come to you. So that is what may I understand.
He said if you are building a bridge, you are building a great word, forgiveness.
Forgiveness, yes. You want people to come to you, so your heart is open to forgive people. You are not putting people away. While you are building a fence, you are keeping a person in your mind. That is like, the relationship will not be restored, that's what I understand from this. Praise the Lord.
Praise the Lord. Yes, one more. The last question.
A bridge, when we build bridge, is for us to be able to connect to each other. But when you build fence...
If you build bridge, it's for us to connect to each other.
But if you build a fence, it's just to block. Because now, for example, if you don't want anybody to enter your house, what you do is that, you build a fence. But if you want people to come in, you build a bridge instead of a fence.
Praise the Lord. I hope we all understood. Another one, bridges and assets. Amen? Bridges and assets. So the next one, let somebody quickly read 2 Corinthians 5:17 to 20.
Please facilitate them. You captured those who were not captured yesterday. Anybody who has been captured, his name not...
Is anybody here that has not been captured?
Please, only those who were not captured yesterday should be captured today.
2 Corinthians 5:17.
But if you've been captured, don't capture, don't do that capturing. Continue.
It says, 2 Corinthians 5:17-20, “Therefore, if any man be in Christ, he is a new creature; all things are past away; all things are become new; and all things are of God, who hath reconciled us to himself by Jesus Christ, and has given to us the ministry of reconciliation, to which that God was in Christ, reconciling the world unto himself, not imputing their trespasses upon them, and hath committed all to us the work of reconciliation. Now then, we are ambassadors for Christ, as though God did beseech you by us. We pray you in Christ's name, be here reconciled to God.”
Isaiah 63:1-3, “Arise, shine, for your light has come, and the glory of the Lord rises upon you. See, darkness covers the earth, and thick darkness is over the peoples; but the Lord rises upon you, and his glory appears over you. Nations will come to your light, and kings to the brightness of your down. Praise the Lord.”
Hello? I hope everybody can hear me. Hello? Hello? Everybody can hear me? Fine. Yes, we are now on discussion section. We are beginning with the head. And the head simply means, what does it say and me? What does it says and me? Now, the first question here is, what does it mean for God to have given us the ministry of reconciliation according to... The passage is just right. According to 2 Corinthians 5:18. We need to follow this. I hope you understood the question. Yes, if you understand, let me hear you.
2 Corinthians, according to the book of 2 Corinthians 5:18, “And God, and all things are of God, who hath given, who hath reconciled us to himself by Jesus Christ, and has given us the ministry of reconciliation.” That means Jesus Christ came to this world just to connect us back to the Father, to remove that bridge, or to remove that fence that has been separating us from the Father. So now, when he came, he removed the fence and gave us bridge, so we can easily have access to the Father, and he forgives all our sins. So therefore, him leaving the earth, he gave us the ministry of reconciliation. Thus, we have the power and the ministry to reconcile back to God, to reconcile people, to bring people back to the Father.
Thank you very much. Does anybody else have any other comment? Because he said, he said it just now. Does any other person have any other comment?
To align people, to have alignment with God.
No, links it to the question. The question said, what does it mean for God to have given us the ministry of reconciliation according to... He gave us the ministry of reconciliation. Amen, because of time. Hello? Does anybody, before I conclude, let me summarize, because we need to move fast. Let me hear you, sir.
He gave us the ministry of reconciliation through Jesus, because, like our brother said, he said Jesus Christ came to the world and he was reconciling the world to God. So he left us as he left to heaven. He handed over the burden to us, that reconciling the world, going out, telling people about Christ, bringing sinners to God. That's what I understand.
Facilitate us. Praise the Lord. God is using us to restore relationship between him and men, between God and men. He's using us, the ministry to restore, to reconcile him and men. That was what Jesus Christ was doing before, to reconcile God and men. So we are now here to reconcile God and men. Praise the Lord. Thank you very much, sir. The second one there, for that first, that number one, says, what is the precipice for being enlisted into this label of according to 2 Corinthians 5:17-18? What is the precipice? What can make you be enlisted into this label of reconciliation? Being in Christ Jesus. Any other person?
Ambassadors for Christ.
Being a new creature. One more? One more, then we move ahead. One more? One more?
Living your old ways of life.
Okay, okay. Praise the Lord. Let's go to question 2. Why must God's children arise and shine according to Isaiah 61:2?
Says, “Arise, shine, for your light has come.” So the reason why we must arise and shine is because our light has come already. Jesus Christ is the light, and so because he's the light, we must arise and shine.
Praise the Lord, one more.
Why God's children are to arise and shine? Because God said, “Let your light so shine before men that they may glorify their father.” So the main reason why God's children must arise and shine is for the glorification of the Father.
Said the world is in darkness. Listen to him.
So we are that light that will shine the world.
We are that light that will shine the world.
Yes, because we are the light.
Thank you, sir. We are that light that will shine the world, because the world is in total darkness. Praise the Lord. Now, why, be, which is the art? Now, all we've been saying since, we are saying something, we are saying the other way around, but now we need to personalize it now, from the art. We are personalizing it now. Whatever you say now, you should use yourself. I, I, I. Hello? So the art, what is my attitude? Number one, to what extent are you giving to preaching the gospel around your community? What, to what extent, do yourself, I, remember. Hallelujah. Just hold on, hold on, hold on.
Which means, there's no place that you are that you not represent Christ. Even your life, your life too should represent Christ. And anywhere you go, you should bring Christ to the world, preach Christ.
You didn't get me. Use yourself, yourself.
Okay, I should, I should, I should preach, I should preach Christ anywhere I am. And my life also to represent Christ where I go, even to the end of the earth. Yes, I should preach Christ.
Praise the Lord. I love that. Any other person please?
Just like we have listened, just like we have seen in Isaiah, say, “Let your light shine, so that men will see and glorify God.” He said, “The light has come.” Now, to what extent should I be able to preach? To what extent am I supposed to preach the gospel around me? I should be the light that men sees, light that reds, light give a sight. So my life, the way I live around my community, the way I relate to people, the way I show compassion and love to them, should make them know that, yes, this light is shining, that they would be able to see the road that they are going to.
Praise the Lord. Praise the Lord. Now, the other question from that number one says, what stops you from pushing this mandate? The mandate of preaching, what stops you from pushing this mandate?
Praise the Lord. One of the thing that can stop me...
Like if you have been captured, yes, right, and been captured. Been captured.
One of the thing that can stop me from preaching the gospel is fear. Yes, because I have fear that maybe...
For preaching the gospel is fear.
Yeah. Because I have fear now that if I go and preach, because what if they now storm me like Stephen now? What if they now kill me now, like Stephen Hem? Or they now, you know, that's like they beat me or anything. So it's fear, fear.
Security, there is no security.
Yes, if you check some states now, like, I may do agree, like, because of the crisis, because of the crisis, you want to go and preach to those people that are there. But because of the way, the way, the place is, the killing and everything, you cannot go there. So, I think...
You know, where we read, our anchor passage says that he has given us the ministry of reconciliation. So first of all, if I'm not in good relationship with God, I cannot go to tell people about the God that I'm not in good relationship with. And the people around me are monitoring me, they are reading my character, they know how I live. So if my life is not correct and I go out to preach the word of God, either I'm preaching it and people are making mockery of it, or I may shy away from preaching the word because I know how I'm living my life.
I hope we had it, self-give. We had it. When you, you did something wrong, especially in a particular environment or in a vicinity, it's either you to preach or this shadow of the cloth. So the next one here is, how often are you troubled by the level of decadence and decay that has taken over your environment? What is your unusual response to this burden? I repeat, how often, how often are you troubled by the level of decadence and decay that has taken over your environment? Your environment?
Praise the Lord. Okay, I will say the level, my own, I'm really burdened because, though here I stay, I will refer to some little guys, though let me say within the age of 15 to 18, the way, their way of life, I can't really speak to them. Like, maybe they are doing some kind of things that are not right. But talking to them, they will tell you that you are showing that you know too much, that they don't want to listen to you, anything you have to say, that about Christ now, for instance, you want to tell them that what they are doing is bad, that no, they should change their ways and all that. They will not give you a good listening ear, that is what I have to say. I'm mainly burdened about that.
Now, for that particular, what would not be your response?
Okay, my response, though I will still be trying to push them, like, I will still be persistent, though I know it will not be easy. But I will tell them that I'm still hoping that they will change. Praise the Lord.
And let me use my time, for example, in Annan Brastley, in that piece. In Annan Brastley, what is reigning now is this yahu yahu. So many youths are no more going to church. Many of them are saying that church is discount, simply because, what they are expecting, even some of them are even trying to be dropped out from school, because they are finding easier way of making it. And one of the thing, the thing is leading them to, is idol worshiping. You see them reviving this idol, idol worshiping, what our forefathers did. So it's a very big burden in my heart, that even when you try to preach to them, they will not listen to you. But I will not, I don't give up. What I do is to go in prayer on my knees, asking God to deliver them, let them understand what they are doing.
So that will move on. In other word, you change the narrative, huh? The narrative on the, you change the narrative and engage them with prayer. Praise the Lord. Now, let's go, let's move further. Let's see how far we can go. Quick one, sir, my, you take, what is the message of reconciliation? Sir, you take reconciliation of the world. We take the message, let's go fast.
Okay, what is the message of reconciliation? Reconciliation is one of the central themes in the Christian faith. It is a process of restoring broken relationships, and its ultimate purpose is to bring peace, healing, unity. The Bible reveals that reconciliation, both with God and with others, is not just a moral command, but a divine gift that restores what seemed as divided.
Reconciliation with God. The Bible teaches that sin separates humanity from God. In the beginning, Adam and Eve enjoyed perfect fellowship with God in the Garden of Eden. However, when they disobeyed God's command, sin entered the world and severed their relationship with him. As a result, all of humanity have been affected by this separation. But God, in his mercy, initiated the process of reconciliation through Jesus Christ.
2 Corinthians chapter 5, verses 18 and 19 says, “All this is from God, who reconciled us to himself through Christ and gave us the ministry of reconciliation;” that God was reconciling the world to himself in Christ, not counting people's sins against them. The message reminds us that God took the first step in reconciling us to himself through Christ, sacrificial death on the cross. The penalty for sin was paid, making it possible for humanity to reconcile with God.
It's okay, the ministry. Ministry.
Anyone who is in Christ Jesus becomes a new being. His old life is forgiven and blotted, and he is given a new opportunity to live. 2 Corinthians 5:17. This was occasioned by God himself, through his son Jesus Christ. While Jesus was reconciling the world to God, God was in him. All the way to the cross, suffering the shame and pains, and resurrected with him. That man, we make peace with God again. Having given us the great privilege, he unleashed us into this workforce that we become habitants of this great offer to mankind. He was giving us, he has given us the word of reconciliation so that we begin to speak to men about our past lives and the new one we have in Christ, so that this lot will also be reconciled to God. This is a darkness covering the earth, and a thick darkness covering the people, Isaiah 60:1. The solution to this darkness is the light of reconciled children of God, shining among the people, for darkness cannot overshadow light, John 1:5. If we fail to reach out to them with the message of reconciliation, they will continue to grow up in darkness, for they were made subject to such in hope that we shall be made manifest, Romans 9, Romans 8:19-20.
Some give pupils in the churches, to some others customers and to some others, to some, he gave pupils in the churches, to some others, to their classmates or students, pupils in the school, yet to some, to their customers and clients. In all, he has posted each and every one of us to a particular place or the other where he expect that we extend this ministry of reconciliation.
Praise the Lord. Praise the Lord. Now, let's go straight to the discussion question, which is the hand. Which says, how can I obey? Everybody say, how can I obey?
How can I obey?
Yes, we still personalize it. Now, the first question is, how can I begin to engage my community with the message of reconciliation?
Hallelujah.
One of the thing that I see is that, because, you know, before you start, you need to seek God's help. Need to pray. One of the thing is prayer, and also you can also join in groups like EFAC, where they go for evangelism, you can join like groups like EFAC, so that you can also use that as a platform.
Facilitate us, they reminded that...
With the message of reconciliation, praise the Lord.
You don't talk about we, they, and...
Please, you need get the question, well. The question says, how can I begin to engage my community with the message of reconciliation? Now, who is, please?
I will try to engage my community with the message of reconciliation. There are certain gadgets or objects you can use. For instance, social media platform. Social media platform.
It's you.
Yes. I can use it to pass message, to engage my communities about Christ and all that things. Then sharing of tracks and so on.
She said, sharing of tracks will help her to reconcile men to God in her community. Who is?
On me, it's actually, what I will generally do is that, maybe if I have a discussion with my friend, I'm talking about something, I can easily shift, shift it to the topic of and preparation of the word of God. Instead of me, if I know that I don't have that mindset of going and preaching through the conversation we are having, I can easily shift it to the conversation of the... of the message, it's God.
In other word, what she just said is that she will bring the reconciliation talk in any conversation she engages her friends.
I think the first thing I should do is to make sure that I'm living the correct Christian life, identifying myself, letting them to know that I'm a Christian, standing on my ground whenever challenges comes up, because some of us, some of us do become Christian in the town, but when you go to your village, you compromise, most especially during first period. But if you are able to stand on your ground, no matter what is happening in your community or in your village, you are able to, not only, even in the organization you are, those thing that are not moving right, you are able to stand on your ground, that is the first point of you preaching the word of God.
Praise the Lord.
Hallelujah.
The second is, what specific thing, what specific thing will I start doing to ensure that my light is shining very bright in my community, in my environment?
For my light to start shining in my environment is first, our first four be reconciled back to the Father, be reconciled, yes, back to the Father. Then after that, I will ensure that I am a carrier of his presence, I always study and meditate and pray his word, so that my light can be able to shine in my community.
Amen.
One of the specific, specific thing I should do to carry this message of reconciliation in my environment is that I should love, knowing fully well that Christ came, I mean, God gave Christ to us because of love, he said, "For God so loved the world." Now, God did all he could to reconcile man back to God, knowing fully well that at first man has lost it, man was no longer with God. So for man to now come back to God, God needs to look for means, how to bring man back to him, and he said, "For God so loved the world that he sent." So what I should do in my community is to love, love without discrimination, love without tribalism, love without sentiment, love everybody the way I should love, just like God loved all the world that he sent Christ to die for us. If I love genuinely, that will bring a message of reconciliation, because if someone sees me love genuinely, you say, "Indeed, this person is, is Christian," then you will not be able to come and say, "How did you do this?" From there, I will now say, "Christ did this, this is why Christ came, that we should love one another."
Amen.
According to the word of God, chapter five, it says that you should let your life so shine before men, that they may see your good work and glorify your father which is in heaven. So while you are living a good life, a life that is worthy of, of, of following, that is a way of letting your life so shine, because people will be looking at you, whatever you do, they will be looking at you, so when you do the wrong things out there and you come to preach to them, it's obvious that they will not listen to you, they will first of all ask you, "What kind of life do you live?" So to me, it's better you live a life that is worthy of emulating, so that by doing so, you have let your light so shine before men, praise the Lord.
I think the question is, what specific thing will I start doing to ensure that my light is shining bright in my environment?
you do, we should ask God, God should be the, God should be the number one of everything we are doing and also, we can also meet our pastor if we have any other problem, we can meet, I can meet my pastor to teach me if I have any other things, my pastor and also God, I should pray on what I'm doing and how can I apply it better? One of the ways I can apply it better is to, when I'm doing, when I become what I want to be, I should represent Christ in what I'm doing, praise the Lord.
The person that can help you or that can help me to understand the ministry of reconciliation is Jesus Christ himself, who gave the ministry to you. So now, for example now, if I give you this book, now, you yourself seeing the book will not understand it, except you ask me that give you the book, so it's only me who presented the book to you that understand what is inside the book. So the Holy Spirit or Jesus Christ is the only person that can help me understand the ministry of reconciliation and the way I can apply it in my profession is to ask for grace to carry it on.
With this attitude, that's all, the Holy Spirit will help you to understand it, that what you just said, the Holy Spirit will help you to understand it. Now, the second question here is, in what ways am I allowing God's message of reconciliation to help the way I approach and restore my broken or strained relationship? You didn't get the question? I repeat, in what ways am I allowing God's message of reconciliation to shape the way I approach and restore my broken or strained relationship? You want to say something?
And in what way we can allow God message of reconciliation, because he say he have reconciled us through his son, and so in our broken and strained relationship, when we go there for, okay, when I, okay. They say, "In what way am I allowing God's message of reconciliation to shape the way I approach?" First of all, reconciliation is out of bringing peace, making harmony around us, and in the way I can allow, through his word, reading his word, so bringing it to others, I strive for peace and unity between everybody around me.
We can allow God's message of reconciliation to shape the way we approach, one, by working in accordance to his will, once you have accepted him, you have now reconciled with him, you have to what now work, but when he asks you to do something, you what, you align with what he asks you to do, now you are now allowing him to what, you are now allowing him to shape and what, to shape your way of approach, something like that, praise the Lord.
Praise the Lord.
That is the major thing that will, most of the time, people, people hurt me, and sometimes I will like, "Why is this people, this person doing this to me?" At times I remember, even me myself, I used to offend God, if God, he should hold me by what I do daily, I am not worthy to stand before him, so sometimes, and I remember and say, "If this person has done this, and if somebody should come back to God, I should have the heart of always forgiving, no matter how hurt the person may hurt me, I should have this heart of always forgiving the person," because God forgive us our sin, that is why he had to send Christ to come. If not that he forgive us and want us back, he wouldn't have sent Christ, would have been perishing in whatever we are doing. I should have this habit of forgiveness always, that even if somebody hurts me, somebody trampled on my foot, I should be able to forgive the person, no matter how hurt it could be.
I should not, that's why I will tell you that, if you are that type that smoke, like, I don't usually like all those scotch boys, I will tell you that, if you are smoking, you will go to hell fire, I will not even go close to you, I will talk to you, but I know, I'm not beginning to, like my president will always say us in the air, why, that those people that you are seeing, God can use them at any time, so it doesn't really mean that they are smoking, it doesn't mean they have, this is their end, it means that you are sharing the love of Christ with them, gradually you are winning their hearts, it doesn't, it does not that they, they are not the ones to win you, but you winning them by the love you are showing to them, praise God.
Praise the Lord, we need to move on. I know a lot of us has difficulty, a lot of us has difficulty, so let's move number three. Who in my immediate environment must I encounter with this ghost bear of a matter of urgency, as a matter of urgency? Who in your immediate environment? Who in my immediate environment?
I get the meaning.
Answer, as a matter of urgency. Who?
My family, because Jesus, yes, because Jesus Christ say, "For you shall be my witness in Jerusalem." So before you can carry the message of Christ outside, you must first of all start from your family, before you can move out, because if your family are not safe and other people are safe, it's of no use, you for, you must first first start from your family first, repair your own house first, before going out to repair any other person's house.
Your colleagues in the office. Your colleagues in the office. That's now, they are your immediate environment, your colleagues in the office or your fellow students.
I hope you hear somebody else. I remember somebody who has not spoken before.
Apart from my family that are my immediate environment, another person is my friend, because, my friend, because before I got this light, this my friend, we used to be partners together in doing anything that is not good, so now that I've gotten the light, I should also let my friend know that I'm now a changed person, praise the Lord.
We need to go, we need to go, or should I see alarm up? You've been talking, I need somebody I have not spoken before. Straight face, straight face. Your face is straight, no. Somebody, any other, which person you are, eh, which one?
Even as we are sitting here, this is our immediate environment, like I remember yesterday as we are going to our various hostels, in our car, we are discussing about the word of God.
As we are going back to your various.
Yes, so we are just discussing it, you know, pondering over what we've learned here so far, so I believe that wherever we find ourselves at every moment, we ought to share the word of God and share the word of reconciliation, praise God.
Praise the Lord. To summarize what we are saying, is that anywhere you find yourself is your immediate environment, anywhere. What would just answer just now, I don't know if it answered the last, the, the, the next question, which is the last question, which says, "How do I identify him or her?" We understand, how do I identify him or her? We said something about our family, we said something about our colleagues, we said something about our four brothers and sisters at the hostel, and we said something about our, wherever we are, is our immediate environment. I think we've done well, let's clap for ourselves, let's clap for ourselves, yes. Now, is there any other question, so that we'll go to memory verse? Any question? Okay, let's go to memory verse, everybody say after me. Memory verse, somebody wants to say something?
It's not something that human, human mind could actually figure out, it has to be with the help of the Holy Spirit, just like we have said that God is the one who give us this ministry of reconciliation, God has to be the one to help us identify the person around that we need to reconcile it back to. Most of the time, we do things, so many people want to indicate interest, but some of them may, may be that they just want to show up, but the person that deeply needs that reconciliation, God will actually minister to your heart that this person, speak more to this person. So I want to say that how to identify this is not in human capacity or human knowledge, but through the help of God, through his spirit, that we'll be able to identify him or her that needs this reconciliation.
Praise the Lord. What you just said is, what will help us to identify him or her is, is the help of the Holy Spirit, amen? The help of the Holy Spirit, I hope no other comment, is there any other person that wants to say something? So we go through, memory verse. Memory verse. We are alive now, memory verse.
Memory verse.
Romans 5:10.
Romans 5:10.
For if, why we were God's enemies.
For if, why we were God's enemies.
We were reconciled to him.
We were reconciled to him.
Through the death of his son.
Through the death of his son.
How much more?
How much more?
Having been reconciled.
Having been reconciled.
Shall we be saved through his life?
To his life.
Again, shall we be saved through his life?
Shall we be saved through his life?
Amen.
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 Sir, pray for us.
Our Father in heaven, we are so much grateful for your mercy, we thank you so much for the time we have with you, Father, as we are going, we are not going out of your presence, we ask that your presence will go for us and be a light to the world. Thank you, Father, for hearing us, for in Jesus Christ's name we are prayed.
Amen, amen.
It is very important for us to know that, that if you remove Jesus, we are just on the other side, crying, shouting. Someone once says that the reason why people cannot repent in hell is that there is a great divide between hell and where God is, so no matter how much you shout, God cannot hear you, but Jesus is the bridge that we walk through and assess the Father and be reconciled to him. As I summarize, I want to say to us, as ambassadors for Christ, we have received a ministry, can you tell your neighbor, "I have received a ministry"? Touch your neighbor so that he will know you are talking, said, "Nebo, I have received a ministry." And the ministry every ambassador for Christ has received is the ministry of reconciliation, wherever you are posted, in your department, in your office, in your business, in your hostel, anywhere, even in the bus, wherever you find yourself, you have a ministry to reconcile men to God, and the message the Lord has given to us is the message of Jesus. May the Lord help us, may the Lord enable us, may the Lord grant us utterance at every point, may also give us the burden and the heart, in Jesus' name we pray, and amen, God bless you.
Thank you so much, our Bible study facilitators, thank you prof. One more time, please, can we give Jesus a big hand of praise? I want us to be sincere, if a president walks in, you cannot sit down, if a governor steps into this place, you cannot sit down, for our El Shaddai, our Elohe, Elohim, Merke this came, Ebenezer, bigger than the biggest, greater than the greatest, higher than the highest, father to the fatherless, hope to the hopeless, ha, the fire that burned the seed dust of Lebanon, who can say a thing and a comment to pass when he has not commanded? Who can say a thing and a comment to pass when he has not commanded? The finger of God, the root of Jesse, the peace of peace. The I am that I am, the bishop of my soul, the lift tower of our head, the keeper of our life, give him a shout of praise!